All right, item five, our work session, we're talking about park fees.
Mayor, as James Tony comes to the podium to go over the park fee discussion, I did want to mention that the fees that are being discussed will not be implemented before the art in the park. This is an item for workshop purposes, to have a discussion with council. Nothing has been finalized, and so these fees, if adopted in the future, would apply to future events that are not already scheduled.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Like Marad mentioned, Parks Department's here to workshop with you regarding fees, but not just fees, it's about large events held in Stevenson Park. And if you recall, I guess several years back, there was some dialogue with council regarding large events outside of city facilities on private property, and there was a large event permit instituted during that time. The Parks Department didn't feel the need to weigh in on that because we didn't have the need of overabundance of large events coming into the park. And so, we passed and utilized our own permit that we had in-house for residential permits, such as groups coming in to use the park, family members. Well, with the increase in, you know, visits, people calling, asking to utilize Stevenson Park for large events, and also, you'll see later on, we'll talk about the maintenance and how it affects our maintenance with these large events that are occurring in the park, the Parks Department decided it's best for us to now create some large park event permit for Stevenson Park and other parks. The reason why people are, you know, coming and calling, and we're getting calls at least once a week about new groups wanting to utilize Stevenson Park, is because the park's a beautiful park, and it's centrally located here on 518. It allows for marketing for people to have an event, and, you know, as people are driving by, traffic driving by, people can say, hey, what's going in the park? Let me stop and take a look. And so, that helps that particular person's event that's happening in the park. Also, because it's centrally located, it also is one of the largest parks in this area that can accommodate large crowds. You know, as you'll learn later when Michael comes up to present about the research that was done on fees, we noticed that a lot of other cities do not hold large events in their facilities, in their parks, one because they can't accommodate, and two because of the maintenance that goes along with the upkeep and cleaning of events from large events happening in their parks. So, to walk you through the reason for us coming to you to talk about instituting a large park event permit, one is... The first one talks about current low fees are attracting more and more large events. So, like I mentioned earlier, our current fees for large events are basically the same fees that you would charge for someone who's having a normal family picnic in the park. So, those fees are extremely low for a large event. So, not only for nonprofit, but also commercial entities. So, if there's a commercial group that's coming, or for-profit group that's coming to utilize the park, this is a great opportunity for them to come and utilize Stevenson Park with a fee set at $200, or $175, or $50 for the gazebo and some of the surrounding facilities inside of Stevenson. So, it's time for us to take a look at these fees and maybe make some adjustments to help offset some of the costs that associated with our O and M related to the parks. The other issue is the current budget doesn't allow for increased maintenance costs. You know, for the last several years, we haven't received or seen an increase in our operating maintenance budgets, and it's understandable. We haven't seen that increase, and so, we may do with what council gives us. But, when you start to have these large events, and they start to have destruction in the park, things are breaking, it comes out of our normal maintenance budget, which is really not large enough to handle unexpected damages to the park. So, when that happens, then we have to use monies from other parts of our budget, i.e. our facility maintenance budget, which then puts a damper in a hole in that budget. So, you know, again, not having an increase in our budget to handle some of these problems that happen from a large group causes problems for us. Next one, KFP has expressed concerns about growing number of events. Well, KFB has a beautification plan, and their beautification plan is for all parks, and there's lots of programming that they like to do for all the city parks, particularly Stevenson Park. And when we have to utilize some of their funds and their budget to help repair some of the damage from the parks, it causes problems for their budget, and it causes problems for their plans, i.e., it makes them have to look at alternative ways to provide different programming in the park and beautification programs. The next one, excessive use of the park is affecting the beautification plan. I mentioned that, you know, again, they're using their funds and their monies to provide more beautification programs in the park, i.e. the butterfly garden that you see in Stevenson, they're looking at adding some other amenities to the park. But, with limited funding, because we have to maybe sometimes utilize some of their funds for repairs, like I said, puts a damper on their program. And then, TML insurance policy calls for a $2,500 per facility. So, if a group was to utilize one of the parks, and they rent out the pavilion, we have two pavilions, and/or the gazebo, if significant damage occurred to one of those facilities, then that would require us, if we're unable to receive damages from them, i.e. a deposit, it would cost the city $2,500 per facility to make repairs to that structure. So, you're talking about $7,500 if someone was to rent the entire park, three facilities, and significant damage happened to one or all of those, that's what we would be looking at as far as our budget to make the necessary repairs to get that facility back online. New special event permit applications to capture more detailed information. So, the reason for the permit, again, is to capture that additional information that's needed. A park plan, we're going to ask that individual to provide us with a parking plan. That parking plan needs to show us how they plan to park their participants that are coming in. Everyone knows that there's limited parking around Stevenson Park, and if someone's going to have a large event, then you have to utilize the neighborhoods and also local businesses. So, we're asking them to create a parking plan for their event, so they can show us how they're planning to utilize parking. This parking plan may require for them to bring in a shuttling service, to, like I said, to help ease the amount of traffic that's going through the city, as well as ease the amount of headaches for our local businesses. Event layout, the event layout, again, is just a layout of the park to show us how the park would be utilized, what facilities would be utilized, and how they intend to hold their event. Also, they need to have a backup plan, just in case the park is saturated and unable to be utilized, they need to have an event layout for their backup plan B. Emergency plan, emergency plan requires them to show us how they're going to handle an emergency situation, i.e. if there's a lost child, or if there's a significant issue in the park, where there's a, you know, a mass shooter, or some type of significant emergency situation, they need to be able to show us how they're going to be able to handle that, and how they're going to plan for it. And of course, inclement weather plan, if there's going to be a thunderstorm nearing, coming in unexpectedly, or some type of hurricane or tornado, they need to be able to show us how they're able to coordinate with the different agencies within the city to make sure that the word gets out, and to be able to provide a safe environment for individuals. And then, the last one is how the event would be promoted, social media, radio, TV ads, et cetera. We need to know what their plan is, because the more you promote a program, the more you publicize an event that brings larger crowds to the park, and so, we need to know what that number will be consist of based on the social media outlets. And then, the permit is to require special event insurance to cover damage to the park. We're asking for that individual to provide us with not only their liability insurance, but to create some type of special event insurance. That special event insurance will help us offset some of the costs if there's damage to the park provided by that end user. And then, the permit will be routed to various departments such as PD, FMO, EMS, to get their approval and their buy-in, to make sure that the special event that's held at the park is covered for an emergency situation, inclement weather, and to make sure the event layout is suitable for security.
James, for the benefit of council, a number of these items are currently within the requirements for special events already. So, for instance, we do, when there's Texas Music Fest or other big events at the park, some of these very same items are taken into consideration. This is just formalizing that a little further.
Yes, putting this into, again, a special event permit. Next thing I'd like to do is talk about the current pricing, and I'll bring up Michael, who, he's our assistant director, and he did the research to try and find out what these, what rates are occurring in other cities, and so, he'll run you through the information that he found during the rate increase.
Good evening. All right, so, for some of this pricing, it's just, you know, what we currently charge, what other cities, government entities around us charge, and kind of compare, you know, the two together. So, our current pricing, like Mr. Tony said earlier, is the same as, you know, a family wants to rent, you know, the pavilion for a birthday party, we kind of have those same fees, which we've done in the past. Currently, for nonprofit groups, we just charge a $200 deposit, no fee, so they get that full deposit back as long as there's no damage. So, and that's $200 deposit per facility, such as they rent the gazebo, that's $200, the large pavilion, or the small rotary pavilion, each one of those is $200 each. For our resident rate, it's a $200 deposit per the facility, and a $75 fee, and then non-resident rate is $200 deposit per facility and a $175 fee. So, like Mr. Tony said, there were a few cities that didn't allow special events, such as Angleton, and, you know, League City didn't have anything over 400 people. Alvin, they had a per-hour rate, and these are just kind of daily rental rates. So, if somebody wanted to rent a Saturday and Sunday, you would kind of double these prices. So, Alvin, for their nonprofit fees, $480 for 12 hours, their resident fee, $480 for 12 hours, so it goes across the board, and then, just a $500 deposit. City of Pearland, their nonprofit fee is $600, their resident fee is $1,200, and their non-resident fee is $1,800, with their deposit only being $500. Galveston County, they do theirs based off of the number of people that are scheduled to attend their event, which we understand that that's just an estimation, but with the special event permit application, we're hoping to gather more information, such as, oh, we've got ABC 13 is going to be covering our event. Okay, well, if you say you're having, you know, 300 people at the event, but ABC 13's covering it, obviously, we're going to try to gather more information to make sure that we get appropriate pricing. So, for Galveston County, 300 to 500 people, it's $345 for the fee, and this is for nonprofits. 501 to 2,000, $575, 2,001 to 5,000, $700, and basically, over 5,000, $700 as their fee. Their resident fee is the same as their nonprofit, their non-resident fee is, goes from $700 all the way up to $1,400 for just their fee, and their deposit goes from $200 to $2,700 if you have over 5,000 people. Harris County, their fee is $430 regardless, with a $280 deposit. City of Galveston has a $200 fee with a $1,000 deposit. So, as you can see, you know, some of these kind of flip whether they're more in tune to collecting more of a deposit and less of a fee, or more of a fee and less of a deposit. So, based from the information, we kind of put our heads together as a department and put some pricing together, just as a suggestion. Obviously, we want city council to give the information and suggest, and we'll move whatever direction that you guys decide. But, if our attendance is less than 250 for nonprofit, we start at $150, and then, as it goes up, you know, if you have, expecting 3,000 or more, the nonprofit fee would be $500. For-profit is $250 starting out, all the way up to $1,000, so almost doubling the price. And then, the deposit would be $600, and then, we decided to go up to $2,500 to help cover our deductible. Main reason for that is, obviously, we'd look at getting special event insurance, and sometimes, you know, there's fights back and forth between whether their insurance company's going to cover the damage or not cover the damage, or making sure we got appropriate pictures. So, just to cover the basis, that was our suggestion, was for that deposit for the $2,500 to help cover that. This kind of just shows you price comparison from, you know, just from the suggestion based off of what you've already seen. So, our nonprofit fee would be less than Pearland, close to what Alvin is charging and what Harris County is charging, and then, but obviously, you can see our deposit is a little bit higher once you go to the larger number of people.
I'd like to ask a quick question. Say the farmer's market, they are there all day, but they never have probably more than 200 people show up, but that it's all day long. There's some people that come in the morning, they're doing their thing, there are probably about 70 or 80 people there, but all day, there might be 300 or 400 people that show up. Or it's four hours, okay. Are we charging them based on the total amount of people that show up there, or just the load that's happening at a particular time?
So, that's a great question. So, the farmer's market currently is using the parking lot and not the park. So, this would just be large events in the park, basically grass, you know, things that are using the park itself. Farmer's market is strictly just the parking lot. So, theirs is a little bit different.
There is one in the park that's there on Saturdays. Your wife's there almost all the time. What is it? But what is it? What is it?
It's the farmer's market.
It's the farmer's market?
But they moved it, they moved it.
Oh, they moved it?
Yeah, they used to be, correct. Now, they're twice a month. It used to be once a month, twice a month.
A couple of questions here. How many large events in the last couple of years have had damage in excess of their deposit?
I would say, I know of two.
Yes, there is at least three. Just recently, Ardena Park was in the, had their last year event, and there was significant damage to the drive coming in to Stevenson Park. So, that expense cost us about $10,000 to repair the drive coming in.
And then, if an event had suitable insurance to cover the difference between what, you know, TML would cover and our insurance cover, if they came in with, you know, such insurance, saying, hey, we got insurance that'll cover any damage, would that lessen the need to do the deposit, you think, or not?
Certainly a possibility. We're open to any suggestions that council may bring forward to us, so...
I got two more real quick questions. What about city-sponsored events? Santa in the Park, Fourth of July, what about damage during those, and how does that handle?
It would be handled through city funds.
And through city insurance.
And through city insurance.
Okay, but if there's damage that's less than what TML covers, and we're going to, we got to cover that, too?
We'd have to cover the deductible.
One last question. You mentioned that you were going to have a process that had three or four city departments got to review each permit. Can one department out of the whole group nix it? I mean, it's got to go through each one, and you have to get everybody to approve, and if one guy doesn't, then it's a goner?
Well, we'd take it back to the end user and ask them to make those corrections that that department may suggest. PD may say, hey, it's going to require, you know, X number officers, and, you know, in order for us to do that, then this group is going to have to do XYZ, so we'll bring that back to that end user and have them make adjustments on their permit application plan.
Provided there's not a conflict with scheduling, there's nothing that the city would do to deny the permit. Simply put, there would be requirements that they would have to provide additional officers, or improve their parking plan, or the evacuation, or whatever the case may be, but there isn't anything fatal within the permit process that would keep the event from taking place.
Is that deposit refundable?
Yes.
Fully refundable.
I have two questions on the actual application, which, let me start off with a lot of what you're asking for, for Texas Music Fest, which last year is the first year we had it in the park, was pretty much everything we were already doing, so no real big issues. But I did see on the application, the layout, a request for the layout, 90 days in advance, three months in advance. How detailed a layout are y'all talking about? Because I know, because of events like Santa in the Park and Fourth of July, y'all know it's very fluid, right up until you're almost on there, so, on the date. So, how detailed are you looking, what kind of detail are you looking for in that layout? Because you all said in our meetings with us, all of our committee meetings, too, so does Fallsier Fire, and EMS, and PD, we got all the city folks involved in those meetings. Hopefully, good communication.
Right, and those details were great, you know, we knew where everything was going to be located, that way, if, you know, if we got a phone call, you know, where's this going to be, where's this going to be, we could help answer questions. We just want to be better informed. I think, you know, this permit application has been long overdue, you know, we've had several groups that are calling, and, you know, and so, of course, if they see a park in the event, who do they call? They call us, you know, and so, normally, like, oh, well, you need to call that number, you know, so, you know, we can now better inform the public if they call, instead of, you know, routing them back to them, you know, and as well as knowing exactly what's going to entail in that event. Now, you know, I'm not going to say, okay, well, you know, are you going to have 15 tables under this one tent, you know, at this location, you know, 10 feet by 10 feet from this certain tree? No, we're not going to ask that, but, you know, in a general facility of, you know, what is the park layout going to be, you know, where are you going to have EMS located, you know, where are you going to have the stage located? That way, we can approve that and say, okay, well, we don't want people driving on this location, or we, you know, that way, we can help answer questions. And it's more to help us, as well as, you know, you say, well, we're going to have, you know, a moving truck come in to deliver the stage. Okay, well, that's good information, and no, this is where you can access the park, this is where you can drop it off, this is where you can't do those things, so...
Well, that's why it was so beneficial to have y'all sitting in on our committee meetings, and we appreciate y'all taking the time for that. But my question is, I saw in the application, it's 90 days before, so are you kind of looking high-level 90 days? Because as y'all know, it's kind of fluid up until a week or two before the event.
Correct, yeah, we would certainly be flexible with the end user. Yes, 90 days gives them enough time so they can effectively plan their program and their event, and of course, we will continue like we've done in the past, sit in with that end user, and make the adjustments as it becomes closer to the event, based on weather, based on, you know, park conditions. So, that's something that we've always proud ourselves in doing, helping the end user make sure they have a successful event in the park.
Yeah, I mean, I thought it worked out very well this past year, it was our first year, we were all learning, of course. My other question is, I noticed that it says that the city can supersede this reservation if you've got your permit going on, and the city can supersede that, so that's not something we would really enact, is it? I mean, because once you, while these events, as y'all know, Fourth of July, you plan for 12 months. So, I'm talking about, it's item 10 is about the layout, and item 11 is about the city being able to preempt. Is that possible, seriously?
For example, if, you know, there was a hurricane, and we had to make proper preparations, we're going to say, we're going to cancel your event, we need to, you know, stage equipment in the park, you know, for example, there's a hurricane coming, so it's more of...
That'd be a natural disaster. Maybe we can specify that in number 11. It's just a little frightening that if you spent nine or 10 months planning an event, and then the city says, oops, we're going to have such and such here. Hurricane's a whole different ballgame. But can we work on the wording on that, so it doesn't scare people that they think their event could be trumped by a higher calling from the city? Thank y'all, I appreciate that. Those are all my questions.
Do we currently charge or ask people to buy large event insurance? Is that something required now?
We do.
So, Art in the Park and all those chamber, other groups that are renting it and having large events, they're providing insurance?
Well, they provide, they provide their liability insurance and name the city as an additional insurer. We haven't gone so far as to specifically ask for event insurance, and that's kind of one of the changes we'd like to make, to make sure that that individual provides event insurance for that particular day, so that we could cover any damages that may occur from them.
Okay, I like that idea. I know they do that with the PTOs and stuff and carnivals.
If I may, when you're having it off-site, we had to do that, we had to name them as covered, so they're named in your liability. So, it's nothing different than off-site would require.
Yeah, I remember when these two ladies came and visited me 11 years ago when they first had this idea, and I've watched it grow, and it benefits our city and things in our city in many different ways. Unfortunately, they haven't evolved yet or grown yet to having large sponsorships. So, it's a lot of individuals, farmer's market is the same way. So, people get great ideas in our city, and they start something, and they're funding it and working really hard, and I want to be supportive of that, and I want to protect the city, too, and our resources, but I also want to be supportive of those people that are enhancing our city by coming up with these great ideas for community events and haven't gotten the sponsorships, you know. I know how hard it is to get those sponsorships, because there's a lot of different groups asking for them in a small city. So, I want us to be real careful in that. I don't have a problem with large deposits or fees for non-residents or groups that are outside of Friendswood, but when it's a nonprofit supporting Friendswood, and the proceeds stay in Friendswood, and go back to enhance things in Friendswood, I want to be real sensitive to that, and, because some people are writing personal checks to cover those deposits and fees. And I don't know, do we ever see how much that profit is? Do they ever tell us how much their profit is? Could that be something that we ask for in determining maybe how much would be reasonable for us to be asking for?
We can, but much like anything else, there has to be some level of, I don't want to say a full-blown audit, but verifying what's turned into the city. We've seen this in building permits, for instance, where a home will be valued at X prior to the change in state law, in order to have permit fees set at a certain point, and then it goes out on the market three times that, so...
So, I'd just like to ask, historically, you know, year on year, how much has come out of y'all's budget to perform maintenance on facilities? Just an average, not, you know, $10,972 last year, but on average, year over year, what is it typically that you guys have to come, that the city taxpayers have to come out of their pocket to pay for these damages? Do you know?
We don't have an exact number, and again...
I didn't ask for an exact.
And it depends on the type of damage that has occurred in the parks.
Yeah, so, let's just say over the last five years of managing your budget, you've on average had to come out of your budget $15,000 to repair parks every year, on average? Obviously, some years are 2,000, some years are 20,000. Is it 15,000 annually, is it 10,000 annually, is it...
I would say somewhere between the 5 and 7 range.
Okay, okay.
And that's exclusively for large events, or is that for just use of the park?
That's use of the park, because, you know, it's large events as well as...
Well, it can be any event, right? I mean, a junior high football game, somebody can go in there and rip a urinal off the bathroom wall, and we have to pay for it, I get that, I get that. So, I'm just trying to get a picture of how much and how frequently these damages are, okay? So, I think that's an important estimate to have in place when we start determining fees and deposits. On the flip side of that, I agree 100% that if that number's significant, we need to be charging the event holders to cover those costs, and they should put down deposits to cover those costs. Because at the end of the day, it's the taxpayers of this community's parks. It's not, and it doesn't matter if it's a nonprofit or for-profit, if it's a local resident or a non-resident. In a big event on your scale of 3,000 plus, that's still less than 10% of the population in this community, but we're never going to have more than 10% of the population, hardly at any event, even the Texas Music Fest, which is phenomenal. So, I think when you're asking all of the taxpayers of the community to foot a bill of $20,000 to repair a park, that that's somewhat negligent on our part. I think that that cost should be incurred by the event holder. So, I'm in lockstep with you on that. I just think when it comes to how we get to the fee and the deposit, it would be best for me personally to have an understanding. I don't think it, it shouldn't take you long to be able to come to the next meeting and say, you know, in '18, we spent $7,300, in '17, we spent $12,000. you know, in 18, we spent $7,300, in 17, we spent $12,500. And let's go back and see if we can historically pull those numbers out and say, year-on-year, we're averaging, you know, $8,500 out of our budget to repair these parks. If we initiate this fee structure, we'll break even. And if it's an average, it's an average, you know what I mean? And I'd be happy with that. So I'm behind you. And, and, and I think, I think the large majority of the taxpayers in our community would support that the event holder be the one to pay for the damages, not the, not the citizens who pay taxes in this community. So I support your idea, but I think we need to know historical data, year-over-year, for like the last seven years on how much we've spent out of your budget, which has not gotten a bump in, in money, I recognize, how much you're having to come out of your budget to do things that you shouldn't be, and the taxpayers of this community shouldn't be responsible for fixing. That's all I've got.
And remember, there's money in your budget for the normal wear and tear, maintenance on the park. We all, we all get that. There's, there's some level that you guys are going to spend every year to repair just joggers, you know, going around the path. You know, there, there's a repair there that requires money. But we are, we're all talking about the over and above that shouldn't have to be shared with all the taxpayers in the city, you know, and, and Art in the Park has kind of got a, a bright light on them because last year, you guys allowed some big heavy truck to come in, and it did $10,000 worth of damage to that sidewalk over there. And I don't know if you guys are letting that guy come back in this year, or you're going to watch him real close or what. But, you know, hey, you know, we, we, we had some damage, and, and it's a hit to the budget to, to have to, you know, cough that up. So I'm agreeing with everybody that's talking up here and with your ideas, your proposal, that we, we somehow recoup the cost of these. And whether or not it's, hey, everybody that has a large event puts down $2,500 because that's what our T M L deductible is, maybe that's fair, you know, and granted, if you have these organizations put down a big chunk of money, they're going to be more intent on making sure that, hey, you know, walk with that guy that's got that 12-ton truck, you know, driving on our sidewalk, and make sure he doesn't go to the edge and break them. So, or, you know, the, the other idea that came up was make them take out a policy that, that will at least pay our deductible, and maybe we could help them with that. Maybe, maybe the city has an insurer that we could, you know, charge the fee to them for the, for the policy, but we, you know, could streamline the process because we're going to be doing it more often than, than Art in the Park. They might be doing it once a year, but we might be doing it four times a year for different events. So anyway, I think we're all saying the same thing. I think there's, there's definitely a solution here we can come to, and, and we can keep from having to tap into your budget every time, James. Anything else?
I, I had just one quick. When you said the $10,000 cost on that, the, the one event, was that actually 10,000 you lost? Or is that towards an insurance claim? Like, did a deductible cover it?
Yeah, no, we actually made the repairs out of the tune of $10,000.
Okay, so would that, if you had insurance on that, then that's something, obviously, that, that would have been covered. But it's also going to drive up your insurance cost if it keeps happening too, or your premiums are going to keep going up.
Yeah, I mean, one thing you have to understand is, you know, the most maintenance that we'll do after each event is, you know, rut control and going in there with sand, manpower, you know, afterwards. It's almost after every, you know, large event that we do. Yes, as part of, part of our maintenance, but, you know, but of course, you know, if, if the event did not exist, that manpower would have been used somewhere else, and that, the, the cost for sand and cost for other items, you know, fuel for the truck to go pick up, I mean, everything, yes, I mean, it wouldn't be there. But, you know, we're just, you know, trying to do what's fair.
It's a balancing act. We don't, I mean, we don't want to run every event out of Friendswood, right? The city has a tremendous benefit in everything. So it, it, you know, in all of these, whether it's a farmer's market, or Art in the Park, or whatever. So, you know, but we have to find a balance there where the event holder is covering cost for damages that are incurred by the event. I think it's only fair.
I, I just want to actually agree with that point. Just, when you come back to us, please, you know, think about flexibility for, for events that may not be overburdened with money, or, or, or have had a good history of performance, or whatever. You know, just like John said, we really want to encourage these events to stay. And, and then, you know, and make sure that we're all covered, so.
You got enough, Mo?
I think, and I think the reason you're stating too that you need the media coverage and such is we're, like Sally was talking about the 90-days-out plan. I guess if the media coverage does start, then do you come back and, is there a check-in point where, I mean, I know like with y'all's event, they probably checked in more often, but if it's an outside event, do they come back to you two, three weeks before the event, hey, we need this now, or, so y'all can plan for that?
Yeah, we stay in constant contact with that end user leading up to their actually event date. Weather changes, we may have to start talking about their plan B. So, yeah, we'll, we'll stay in constant communication.
Appreciate it, thanks.
Sounds good. We're going to take a little short break, come back at 7 o'clock, and kick it off with our, what do we call it, public hearing.